Everybody ready? I need because I need an act. Can I just have an agenda cover page or something? That's when I need to write notes. Realize I gave you my whole file and you're almost hopeless.
I'd like to call to order the Buckford Town Council meeting for Thursday, September 11th, 2014. Road call please, Kathy.
Mike Bornstein.
Yeah.
Glenn Finley.
Yeah.
David King.
Here.
David King.
Here.
Frank Dunbar.
Here.
Paul Gordon.
Here.
Byron Ditten.
Here.
Item three, presentation of any town council recognitions. There's none on that. Item four, considered minutes of previous meetings?
We have some.
Yeah, didn't we?
Yeah, we tabled them.
How would the council like to proceed?
I move we accept the minutes as written for the July 31st, July 10th, March 11th, and March 10th of 2014, and November 14th of 2013.
These were all previously submitted last time.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second to approve the minutes for those dates. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. Derek.
Correspondence needing action. First one, MMA convention voting delegate designation form. I usually do that. I usually go at least to one day, sometimes two days of the convention, depending on what I got going on. So I know that you could fill out that form and put me in there. And I don't know, Kathy, if you send yourself or anybody else to the convention. I forgot to ask you that earlier.
I don't sometimes.
You want to be an alternate?
I could be an alternate.
It's a pretty snoring meeting, just so you know.
I know. I've been here.
So just if you guys would like to do that, nominate me for the official voting delegate and Kathy as the alternative voting delegate for the convention October 1st, 1:30 at Gess Civic Center. We've got a form over there for you to fill out.
Do we have to have a formal vote on that?
Either of you guys, majority of you sign it once it's filled out.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have motion and seconded to approve the town manager as a voting delegate and the town clerk as the assistant or alternate. Anything from the public on this? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item two.
Oh, you know what? That shouldn't say LPC now that I think of it. I was in LPC Motor because I was looking up laws. Should say MRC nominations, which MRC is the group of communities that oversee the operation of the PERC plant and our other trash issues. I had occasion to talk to Greg Lauber yesterday on my way to and from the SCUDIT International Sculpture Symposium. And I asked him about the candidates that were up for reelection and whether or not he had anybody to that wasn't going to be running, so really an opening. And he said, yeah, at least one person would be. And I said, well, I've been out of the loop for 10 years, but I did help negotiate the last contract. What do you think if I ran or whatever to represent this area? And he's in Buckport. And he said, I think that would be an asset to it. So I would ask that you guys nominate me for that position and see if I can win a seat on the MRC board. We will be discussing the future of course trash disposal here over the next three years, which we already discussed, the new technology and the landfill related to it. But also we'll be possibly discussing whether or not we should sign on for PERC for a higher amount. But I would like to be at that leadership table getting the inside information for the town rather than just getting it secondhand. So that's my request.
Second.
We have motion and seconded to, I don't know if it's a point, or at least nominate the town manager for a position on the MRC board. I think under the conditions that you are pretty knowledgeable on the whole thing due to your rendition here a couple of weeks ago, sounded like you pretty well.
I got more tonight.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item three, letter from the police chief.
You'll notice the police chief asked our maintenance guys to take a look at the animal shelter for siding project. And you'll see that he got a total price for them to do the siding on the building itself and then the shed next to it for $2,956.20, which includes all materials and labor. It's in the CIP budget for this year. But rather than go out for bid, I asked Dwayne if that seemed like a pretty good deal to do that. And also looked at it myself and thought it was pretty good. But I think it might be something, since it isn't a CIP plan, rather than putting it out for bid for private contractors to give it to some of our guys, just you might want to make a decision on that. I don't think we're going to beat it though, since there's no profit built into it, I guess, unless they might have padded it a couple of dollars.
Coffee break?
Yeah, right. So, and I'm not a true pro at vinyl siding. I know that would take me a lot longer than it would take Doug. And I know Doug initially said he referred just to paint it, but when I talked to Sean, who was actually at a meeting tonight getting installed on the, oh, sorry, the police chief's main. Right, exactly. Which one day I think he might be president of the whole organization in a few years. That is where he is tonight. So I told him I'd handle this for him. But as he communicated to me, you guys wanted to side it and get it over with so you didn't have to worry about it again, like painting it every three or four years, and vinyl siding would take care of that. So that's that one. Thank you, Chris.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve the town crew actually doing the siding on the animal shelter. Anything from the public on this? Any more from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Number four, letter to the L. It must be MRC again, or?
Yeah, it is. As I said, I was in the wrong thing when I created that wrong note. You have a letter in your packet from Argyle Township, basically standing in opposition to the MRC's plan to build a landfill in Argyle or Green Bush. And they mentioned some environmental concerns, and the location, and the economic costs, and the effects on the wetlands, and species, and things of that nature. I talked to Greg, who's the executive director of the MRC about this. One of the things, we ought to go back to the letter that we wrote. We weren't necessarily saying that we are supporting that landfill in Argyle or Green Bush. We were saying that we really wanted to explore new technology to dispose of our trash, given that our trash is looking at doubling in cost if we continue with PERC in 2018. PERC is still an option on the table. By writing that letter of support for this, we didn't say that we were not going to go with PERC. That might be the thing that we decide is most feasible, but we ought to be looking at new technology. And before we can look at any, or waste our money looking at any new technology, the biggest thing, the most important issue is having a landfill to get rid of the waste that is either leftover, or is the mattresses and things that probably won't turn into an alcohol. In this letter, they mentioned the fact that this, the biomass type of materials and things like that don't produce energy themselves. They usually have to be fed with something else, so the alcohol doesn't have BTU levels and things of that nature. We don't know that yet, because we haven't really done the study. There certainly will be some mixing of maybe some wood chips and things like that. But in order to even get to that point, we need to have the state determine, a public determination of need for us to have a landfill, which there hasn't been one sited, a new one in Maine, I think in like 40 years or so. 70 years?
Something, 1970 or something.
All right, well, yeah, in the 70s. So really, that's the thing that makes it click, is if they say, no, there isn't a public determination of need in the state of Maine for a new landfill, then we shouldn't bother to spend the money researching this new technology. And I think my most important thing is, I would hate to, of course, if nobody really wants a landfill in their backyard. But if this particular site, the environmental concerns and things like that are true, then we would most likely have to abandon that site. It wouldn't be licensed. But we'd have that public determination of need. So when we found that different site, and we had to go back to the DEP, because one of the conditions of applying for a public determination is you need to locate an area where you're going to actually put the landfill. So if the state says, yes, there is a public determination of need, this site doesn't work out, which if Argyle is right, it probably won't. When we go back with an alternative site, I think it would be difficult for the state to turn to us and say, well, this particular, now, a year or two later, there's no need for this anymore. It would be like, wait a second. When we proposed the thing in Argyle or Green Bush, you said definitely we had a public determination of need for a new landfill. This is the same issue we were dealing with before, but this is an alternative site. So really, I think when they did cite it, it was within a 30-mile radius of Bangor was one of the things. They didn't say they threw a dart and it landed on the map in that area. But they chose some isolated areas where there weren't a lot of houses around and other stuff. But really, that biggest issue is that public determination of need, getting it on the record, and then if we need to go back again for an alternative site, I think it would be difficult for them to determine a year or two later that it isn't needed still. And like I said, this is just for finding out whether or not it's feasible to use this new technology to dispose of our garbage. With that said, they're going to be, the MRC will be doing a rebuttal letter about a lot of the points in this, and are supposed to touch on a few of the points that I just stated. But I just wanted you guys to know that, yeah, when I read the letter, I was a little shocked, but then when I thought about the bigger policy in general, and the fact that the public determination of need for a new landfill is the main thing that we need to have before we can even move forward at looking at alternative waste disposal, ways to get rid of our trash, I should say. And maybe actually developing something that actually is, meets the state mandated hierarchy of disposal and recycling costs, because right now we're at the bottom, because incineration is not considered recycling still under the state law, even though it does use the material twice by producing energy. So that's all I want to say on that. I hope that was brief, like I said. Did I say brief statement? That was my brief statement.
Item five, Marina budget report at end of August.
Yeah, I just gave you this because probably in two meetings, the first meeting in October, we're going to be going over the marina and the operations and discussing how things went, and actually ideas for next year. I know you've all visited the facility, and you've all, so some of you made it down to the cookout on Sunday, which was pretty well attended, I think, by both the board and by the users. And they seemed generally happy to me. They didn't have a lot of complaints. But you'll see right now that we're doing pretty good for, you know, revenue, total revenue, $55,000 to date, and $41,000, or almost $42,000 for expenses. So net income right now is $13,886. At the beginning of the year, we didn't get all of the dockage fees, if you will, slip fees, so that's on the table.
There was a check that I see on here. Port Harbor was allowed to keep, I think it was 10.5 of the money there, but I know there was more money, and they sent a check to the town, but I don't see that anywhere on here.
Well, I'll have to see if that.
It was quite a substantial check.
It could be put in there at the end of last year, not dug out of the thing. I have to ask Catherine. One of the things I want to add is, we have 45 slips, I believe. Right now, we have verbal commitment to have 29 of current people coming back next year, which is about $57,000, I think it is. Is that right? $47,500, I think it was. So $47,500 already on paper, or committed, but not, no contracts yet. But we're working on a contract right now. And then part of the discussion October will be is when to send those out. I know how Port Harbor used to do it, would be asking for three equal payments. And I know Bill thinks that maybe we could even wait till later and ask for a smaller payment in the beginning, which would be non-refundable for people, since with the holidays coming up, and when the first bill is, some people may struggle with that. So also, he believes he has another commitment from a few others. But we'll discuss a few of his ideas also going forward. The other thing is, although I sent Dwayne down to see Bill because I didn't have a lot of answers, one of the things that came up was if any of the docks needed repairs, they're 40-foot docks, which I was actually surprised when I went down and saw, and I'm like, are you sure they're really 40? Well, we don't have a trailer that would haul a 40-foot dock up to the public works to repair. But apparently, Bill said, yeah, but we could hire one of the contractors to, that does have a longer trailer for any of them that needed it. But he doesn't see a lot of them will need any major repairs. And when we're pulling them out, we would set any that we saw needed some problems fixed, where they'd have to be, where it would take a substantial amount of time, rather than being able to do it in the early spring as they're going in, that we'd put them off to the side and address it then.
Derek?
And, yeah.
Bill during his October presentation, I believe he has a proposal in regards to maintenance, which would not involve transporting them at all.
Yeah, because he's saying he can do some of the work for the underneath things and stuff like that right there while they're even stacked, like we did last year. But if there's some decking issues, depending on how they're laid out, that's true.
But he has, I know he wants to make a presentation.
He does, right.
As to his proposal, so I don't.
Yeah.
Want to offer and step on his.
Exactly. Now, the one thing that I do want to get set in stone now is, because on November 4th, 5th, and 6th, we're pulling the docks out, Bill will be in Florida by then. And he has asked that we hire Bucksport Marine Services to oversee the removal of the marina docks, because he believes that company has the most expertise and knows it the best to offer their services. And of course, Mike is here. He just asked me, hey, what the heck am I out there for?
I didn't even know this was.
Because he didn't know it, just so you know. So I hadn't even really talked to him about it. So, but that is the guy Bill says, or that company is the best company to oversee this and know what to do. So if you want to do that, that may be something that we want to work on. Even though I kind of skipped down to 8B, I just noticed, rather than, I looked down, I was just looking at it.
That might be a good item to discuss. I just, obviously, we need to have some kind of a number.
Yeah. But I don't want to go through the motions of getting any numbers or anything else if it's going to be any issue at all, so.
And I didn't give any numbers.
Right. And he hasn't, but that's Bill's thing. But I wanted to get us ready now so that we have time to address that, because November will be coming up, and soon enough. So that's all I have. I don't know if anybody has questions about the budget. I'll wait till 8B if I have to, although that should be a really short discussion now, since we just discussed it.
I just wanted to say that gasoline that we predicted we'd sell, they sold. And they've more than doubled the gasoline that Port Harbor was selling. And they did it at a fairly decent profit per gallon. So, and they've kept the gas prices in the area equal to or lower than everybody else. So it drew a lot of people in, and I think that not only drew them in, but when they see the marina, they say, well, maybe I wouldn't mind keeping my boat here instead of the other place that charges $4.40 a gallon, you know? So I think it helped a lot.
If they kept the price up to where it was, they probably wouldn't.
They wouldn't have done, yeah, yeah.
Also.
And they still made a profit.
Oh, yeah.
That's great.
They made good money on each gallon, too. Yep.
If Bucksport Marine Services is hired to do this, we should contact Port Harbor Marine, because part of the sales to us was that they would come back and help.
And help.
And if they don't want anything to do with us, and send us a little money.
It would be nice if they did come back and help, just to, you know, they helped put it in, and, you know, as I said, and as I said, you could do what you want. That's something, the email was in here, so.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with discussing it, the Bucksport Marine Services, simply because councils, many councils before us have historically done that with other council members who belong to companies that we subcontracted with, just to be the obvious inability for anybody to vote on the issue. But other than that, I think that there's no, I don't see any thing, reason to be upset or concerned about it. And I think I would, I would like to see the town manager to enter into discussion to see what we're talking at for numbers.
Right.
So we can make a decision on that.
Okay, we got to go back up a ways, don't we?
No, no.
Yeah, we got to go back up to number six, public hearings, there's none.
Yeah.
Item seven, new ordinances to consider, there's no new ordinances to be listed. Now we can get down to discussion items, managers, clarification and direction, or council discussion or input on issues. A is town site, dead and dying trees.
Now, I didn't know what the town site was, but Dwayne came in and gave me an education on the town site. And I said, what does these millhouses have? Why is it called the town site? I still haven't figured that out, so you know. But I've accepted the name as the town site, because that's what it's called.
That's where you were supposed to buy a house.
Yeah, is that what it was? All right. So Dwayne tells me that there's, ironically, we have a dead tree that we need to address right off. And then I, being a bigger picture guy, said, well, we have a lot of these trees down there that are just about dead. Why don't we just look at taking them all down here in the next fiscal year or something else, and look at proper trees to replace them with in the future? So that's really what this discussion is about, is to, rather than just nickel and dime this thing, why don't we just get it underway and get these things going? And then that's, Dwayne kind of gave me that laugh, too, when he said, have fun with that. So that's why it's from my knowledge, so I don't walk into a landmine.
A little background for you, these trees that we're dealing with in the town site are elm tree replacements that were done probably 40 to 50 years ago. And they planted a single species called silver maple. Silver maple are a trash tree. They're fast-growing, they love water, therefore you produced a lot of money to replace sewers and storm drains down in there. They also grow very erratically and are now over quite a few houses. As an average, I take one of them down a year. The reason for the discussion is, you give me $1,700 a year to take trees, or to work on trees. I've already spent $1,000 of it to take one pine tree out of the bucket cemetery. So I approach Derek, asking him, can I get more money? Because as a general rule, these trees cost us over $1,000 each to take down. My price tag that I got in today from Two Arborists is $1,200 or $1,500 for a single tree. Ironically, the tree we're taking down is the last elm.
The last elm?
Is actually an elm. I thought it was a silver maple, but it turned out to be a five-foot diameter elm. But it is now dead. So it survived a little bit longer. But along that line, most municipalities that had planted these trees as replacements realized the mistake. And so they generated projects to remove them all in one fell swoop to eliminate the problem. That's what we're talking about here. There are 13 other silver maples still in existence in the town site. And they average four and a half to five-foot diameter at the base. And a good majority of them are overhanging the houses with substantial leads over the houses, waiting to fall. The crowns are dying in them. If you drive through there, you see fungus growing out of them, they have other trees growing in them, there's hollows in them. Each one of the arborists that we met today recommended that they all come down. What we're trying to do is, if we do them all together, to get a better price than individually.
How many are there?
13.
Is that including the one that we were talking, that we originally talked about?
No.
So 14 trees total?
Correct.
We want to take down that one now anyways, Paul. Next year, look at a bigger project to take them all and look at, in the meantime, we did a little exercise on what would be other trees to replace them with.
I think that's something that we'd have to get the committee, I can't think of the names.
Conservation committee.
Conservation committee involved in, because we were laughing, but if you were to just arbitrarily go down and try to cut 13 trees down, you'd have an armed insurrection without making some plans.
To be honest with you, we take the trees down at the request of the property owners. And a majority of the property owners down there have asked that the trees, we have not done significant trimming on any of the trees in 10 years.
But I think, I think we've got plenty of time. If we're looking at doing this next year, to get the conservation committee involved, decide, talk to the property. decide, talk to the property owners, advise them what's going on, and come up with a reasonable tree replacement that isn't a trash tree, but also that won't, you know, won't destroy the sewers or water lines or anything else. So, I mean, there's a lot of rig and roll has to go on there, but I think we definitely, we've got to take the dead one down.
Now, I'm, I'm working with both these arborists to come up with a price tag for the project, so I don't have that yet. I have a price for today's tree that needs to come down. It is dead.
The others could be as much as 20 grand to take them all down then, or close to it.
If you say $1,000 a tree and then discount it a little bit.
Oh, that's, okay, so.
For multiple, you know, for an organized, you know, one bang-bang, maybe seven, one week, two week worth of effort.
Yep.
Does this include stumping?
This would include stumping.
Okay.
Because obviously, we'd have to take the stump out. I don't know what the price tag is going to be. The $1,000 is typically what it takes to place the tree on the ground. And we would remove the wood. It wouldn't be left in place, it would be, the town crew would help, the large pieces of wood would be picked up and disposed of by the arborist. In most cases, he said it'd be free to anybody who wanted it.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Usually goes fast.
We would probably want to advertise that if you want the wood.
Yep.
You know, please let them know, because he doesn't want to carry it back to anyplace.
It will be gone, I'll guarantee you.
But there is a substantial amount of wood that can't be chipped in these trees, but it's too big for us to just leave around and then say, "Here, somebody come over here and cut, and you need to get it out of the site."
Right.
The property owners, I would assume, would be, if it comes off your property, you'd get first shot at keeping the wood.
Yep.
And beyond that, give it out, that's fine and dandy, but I said, I think that, you know, you could start looking at a price, the problem is, I wouldn't want to get too deep into the price issue until the committees have the chance to meet and decide what they want to do, because you've got to take the trees, but what are we going to do after that?
Well, we would, and I've, I've asked the arborists to suggest replacement trees.
And that's where the Conservation Committee would come in, because they've got to have an input into that.
You have to replace them?
Yeah, that's again, at the discretion of the town.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I mean, if the property owner doesn't want the tree replaced.
Oh, yeah.
All of the, all of these trees lie within the towns right of way, okay? They're, they're all within the towns right of way. They, they're in front yards or in the esplanade between the sidewalk and the, and the pavement, but they're in technically someone's front yard in the town site. And there are different numbers on each street, but they're on Bagley, Spink, Summer, Thomas, on every one of the streets. And as you go along, apparently, one tree was planted in every house.
I don't see why we can't tell them to take the dead tree down, and if it, if it overdraws that account, it will address it with.
You'll probably only overdraft the account by $400.
Yeah, that's, we can live with that.
And then we put a big plan together for next year.
Correct.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
And also, I think if you do that, then you ask the homeowners if they really want a tree in front of their house.
Right.
Maybe we only replace 10 instead of 14 or something.
I mean, the trees that I've taken down, the vast majority of people haven't asked for a new one to be in its place. To be honest with you, they haven't.
I plow a driveway up there, I get to plow around trees.
Right.
They're everywhere.
Yeah.
So, anyways, I was going to say, the reason that I wanted to bring that up is because before we started going down the road of doing it, we wanted to make sure we had council buy into the idea that it is a good idea to take these trees down and just get them out of the way and replant rather than, or replant wherever people really want them. I think we ought to have a couple of shade trees on that street, but certainly, that could also determine the species that we might want to use that aren't going to become too humongous, but offer some shade.
Now, taking these trees down doesn't eliminate all the trees on the town site.
Right.
There are replacement maples that have been planted over the years. Some of them are larger or smaller, but this does not eliminate 100% of the trees from the town site.
Just the bad boys.
It does make some holes in the canopy.
What are we placing trees with now? What have we been using?
Your, the selection have been mostly maples.
Yeah, but I mean, you said these were.
These were silver maple, which is as close to a weeping willow as you can find.
Okay. Yuck. But lately, we use, we've been using something different.
We've been using red maples, sugar maples, different maples. There are a few norways down in there that are dying off on us, which is, again, not a great tree to use, but some of them are dying.
Yeah, sugar maples, we could have a maple festival.
Well, we just tapped hours from the town right up front of my house last the spring, and we, we make quite a bit of syrup out of them.
Yes, there are new elms that are disease resistant, and as part of the, I, I acquired one from my own home, that's a hybrid elm. Don't necessarily give the same spread, but they are a hybrid elm. So, there are elms that are available, and I know Polly Bear had an elm program for years back in the 80s, and that she was trying to save, they were planted up by the ice skating rink, and fell out of favor and kind of disappeared. But yes, there are elms that you can acquire to replace, and there are different sources that would suggest, street trees, as they call them.
American basswood.
Sounds good.
All right, have we discussed item B enough, or?
I'm done with that one, to be honest with you.
Yes, sir.
Can I speak on the trees issue?
Certainly.
Councilman Key heard my speech earlier this afternoon concerning the tree issue. I just wanted to comment on the situation that's going on with trees around the country, specifically in the Midwest, and if you haven't heard of emerald ashbore, you're about to. It is a, it is an insect that's coming. It's now, well, it's in Concord, New Hampshire, they found an annalabarium in Boston last week. It destroys all ash trees. Your ash trees are going to be eliminated. So, what's happening, the impact on most municipalities is the financial impact. Removing trees, as Duane said, is very expensive. When you have to remove trees for safety, and you have to remove an entire species, and it will wipe them out, there will be no more ash trees here. I'm figuring five to 10 years, they're going to be gone. It's a huge impact. The towns in the Midwest that have budgeted $250,000 a year for tree removal because of this insect are finding it's like 314. So, all the towns are underestimating the, the cost of getting this stuff cleaned out. Emerald ashbore is in Concord, New Hampshire. It was going to take 10 years to get to New Hampshire, it's taken a year and a half. It will be here, it will eliminate ash trees. It's a sad thing, but it's going to happen. My, my comments to most people I talk to in municipalities is, start your inventory, find out where your ash trees are. Find out if you own the ash trees or if they're on private property, because the sewer issue that we discussed earlier will come up on the tree issue as well. Why should I remove this tree if it's on your property? So, once you do your inventory, and I know there was an inventory done many years ago here, and they went around and tapped metal tags on all the trees identifying what the trees were, that, I'm talking, well, as you know, 50 years ago, David. But just a heads up, be ready, and most municipalities aren't, they're going to react, but it'll be a huge financial burden for anybody that has a lot of ash trees in the public. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Anything else on item B? Let's go to item nine then, the actual agenda items. Okay? Item A, Consider Resolve R 2015-33 to approve paying Bangor Gas retainer for gas line installation and road repairs. This was an item where the initial aid in construction was 250,000 for Phase 1. We gave them $200,000 down and kept 50,000 as a retainer, and we had to wait for the approval of our highway director to say that they made all the repairs to the road that they promised, and I think we're asking to basically release that retainer.
Yes, the last of the items for MDOT were answered to the satisfaction of MDOT last week. So, the MDOT were holding their punch lists and have released them. So, we have no objection to you releasing the IOU money.
You're happy with all of your stuff?
Our stuff was done satisfactory to ours and has now been done satisfactory to MDOT on their sections of road.
Okay, thank you.
So, they're reish, they are starting to issue new opening permits, additional gas services.
So, I hear you're saying there's nothing left to be done, that falls within the purview of the gas company.
They're, they are acceptable to the town to pay the bill. We have a striping of one, one crosswalk at the middle that they paid over or removed, so they have an IOU on that, but that's not enough to keep us from paying them.
Other than that, there's nothing that remains to be done.
Correct.
How would the council like to proceed?
I'd make the motion, we pay the balance of this, to this gas, gas company.
Second.
We have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Are they going to make a commitment to Phase 2, or are they?
I, I.
You're almost out the door.
I am speaking out of turn in that Dave Mylan is technically your, your, but my, I met with Bangor Gas technical people this week to discuss Phase 2, which is the next phase. They, my understanding is, they are finishing the engineering designs now and plan to have the work started shortly.
Good answer.
Have I heard that story in a while?
They have not applied for any of the opening permits, they haven't applied for any dig safe, they haven't done any of that. They're wait, they're pending, there's, we have some challenges to them about the routing, and we've offered suggestions. We don't know how that's going to come back to us. And we made suggestions based on ease of trying to get their gas pipelines to certain locations.
Yep.
And hope that they follow our kind advice instead of creating the issues we had last year. But we haven't seen their drawings, we haven't seen their layout. And for those of you who don't know, their proposal is to continue on Main Street to the intersection of school, to continue on Franklin Street from Elm to School Street, then to run a line down Federal to Main, in other words, loop through, and line, and run another line down School to Main. The question is, they want to service several individuals off of Central Street below Franklin, and that has an enormous amount of underground utilities in the ground. And we've made suggestions that they can access those businesses, residences, through routes other than in the street. Whether or not they follow through is the question. But beyond that, the route is simple, it's small, and it would provide service to this building.
Thank you.
Duane, did we also discuss on that, that we wanted to put them in the sidewalks rather than in the streets?
Right, right. The locations that, other than Main Street, the Main Street location is the only one that they're going to continue in the parking spaces down this side. All other ones are, if physically possible, in sidewalks. In other words, Franklin Street in the sidewalk, Federal Street in the sidewalk, School Street, about half of it can be in the sidewalk, but there's a sewer line under, from Buck Street down, so probably be in the roadway. But they've been told that we, I, since mostly other spots are my roads, would request that they keep all of their traveling in the sidewalk where physically possible. And it kind of does two things, gives us a new sidewalk for one, but it keeps it out of my roadway. But they didn't, they're not necessarily the final choice guys, but they didn't seem to be adverse to that request. And it has been standard with virtually every other location. And they did it for us, they, they went up Broadway on the sidewalk, they went up Elm Street in the sidewalk, so it's, they came down Main Street in the sidewalk until they couldn't, when they hit the concrete. And that's the only reason they're not in the sidewalk, they didn't want to dig up concrete. And that's truly the only reason they're in off of the sidewalk.
Thank you. Paul, you weren't here when this was all proposed. Originally, we passed a resolve for $300,000 in aid in construction. Phase 1 was up to 250, we had 200,000 up front, 50,000 that we released, or are going to release, we already, have we taken a vote on it yet, Kathy?
No.
Okay. And then up to another 50,000 on Phase 2. For the 300,000, I believe it was coming out of the RSU.
The money left over from the school.
Right, right, when the RSU was formed.
Yep.
And so, that money's all been appropriated.
That's who the benefit, the big benefit was, was the school.
And we were able to use that because it was, the route was actually going to the school.
Yeah.
So, okay. Any other concerns from the council? We have a motion and a second?
I voted on it.
Okay, I thought we did, okay, all right.
I got seven.
Okay, item B, Consider Resolve R 2015-34 to authorize advertising, a request for bids to sell manure spreader and approximately five cord of wood. This is from the wastewater treatment plant?
Correct. Like the first, the second weekend I was here, I think Mike and Dave mentioned this or whatever, and I was up there a couple of weeks ago, and they said, "Hey, what about that manure spreader and five cords of wood?" And I went, "What are you talking about?" And they said, "It was like your first, second week here, do you remember talking about that?" And I said, "I don't think I remember that discussion, we probably had it." But what was it? And then I said, "I don't think I've ever seen that manure spreader before, so I do remember the wood now." But anyways, so we don't need the manure spreader, it's not working apparently from what they say. I know that people have talked about it, to use it for pots, and the wood, since we have a wood.
Pellet.
Pellet stove, we don't use that anymore, so this wood is just sitting there in the way. It needs to move because those buildings are coming, or those lean twos, buildings are coming down for the new treatment plant work, so like to dispose of it. Winter coming, somebody might enjoy that wood.
It's good prime wood, too, it's been uncovered for two, three years now, so it's good and dry.
How would the council like to proceed?
One more second.
We have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, Consider Resolve R 2015-35 to authorize the investment of $627,834.10 as recommended by the Finance Committee with the First Advisors. Anything on this, Derek?
Yeah, we, we kind of approved this last week in a way, part of that resolve is that language, but the first, this is the amount, and we're investing it in a little different way, similar to Wells Fargo. When the Finance Committee met, we discussed that we're going to be monitoring both of these investments over the 24 months they're invested, because they're invested in a different way than we normally would, and that's why in this also, Dave, if you look at the attached, it says, "The investments will be based on a proposed investment policy presented to the Finance Committee, which will be the basis, the investment of funds maturing on September 30, 2014," which right now is 627,834.10, it'll maybe be a little more. That's what we expect it at maturity. But because this will have some mutual fund investments involved in it, I think it's 20% of the total balance, which should allow us to get a little more money than the traditional CDs. In the meantime, Kathy and I actually were meeting Friday, which is tomorrow, on, with First Advisors, because we wanted to discuss this particular investment policy and also one that was suggested by Wells Fargo, and see whether or not we can consolidate it or do something. I've told Catherine, I think some of the council members are a little hesitant to go too crazy with this thing, so we need to write a little flexibility into the policy so that each time, because our investments will be coming up each quarter, we have some investing to do, and that we may want to decide to stay with CDs on a lot of these while we monitor the other ones, so that this investment policy needs to really lay a lot in the council or the finance. the council, or the finance committee, and then the council's hands before we invest it. But also perhaps discuss, um, uh, without the council, um, saying they wanna change gears or do something different when the reinvestment comes up for these, which will be two years away anyways, that we may have some flexibility to reinvest in a similar way unless we see some, uh, you know, shocking information, or we see such great information that we say, wow, you know, we oughta talk about doing this with, um, you know, some of the other money as we go forward. Um, and, uh, so, uh, that policy will be presented, the actual new policy, or a draft of it, will be presented probably to the finance committee again, and then to the council for further consideration, um, before we have investments in December, which, um, no, February, I think, is the next one that comes up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's when I, we have a next grouping of them coming up. Uh, so anyways, I just wanted to mention that to you, that that was how we've decided to do this, 627,834,10, plus or minus.
Well, there, there doesn't seem to be really much risk involved in this, that I can see, but, um, in reading over the First Investments and all that kinda thing, uh, so I would move that, move the acceptance of resolve 2015 35.
Second. We have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, formally approve and resolve a vote taken on August 28, 2014 meeting, consider resolve R 2015 dash 36 to authorize the investment of funds with Camden National Bank.
Uh, you'll see in this resolve, I mentioned what I talked about, the testing and alternative investment style, but this will be taking the more conservative, traditional, current finance, uh, I mean, investment policy that we still have on the books that we're not burying from in this until, uh, there's a change. And this is for 2.9 million dollars almost, over a 24-month period, but it's in CDs, and we already took the vote to award it to them for 1.2% interest, um, for the five CDs that will all be invested.
This was a vote taken on August 28th, we're just basically, because it was an item not on the agenda, we're just verifying it. How would the council like to proceed? So, we'll, we'll, we have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item E, formally approve and res, a resolve, uh, vote taken on August 28, 2014 meeting, considering resolve R 2015 dash 37 to allow town manager to negotiate and sell to the highest bidder tax-acquired property at 52 Central Street, and reduce bid amounts for all bidders by the amount of driveway construction cost.
Yeah, this basically is what I mentioned at the last one, I did add something new into it, 'cause I know I'm gonna be delayed on the, um, actual sale of the property, but I did give back the estimate, which was less than I thought, so it's $2,000 for the driveway relocation. The high bidder is on board with that, he wishes that we could close the sale a little quicker, but I need to extend it out, uh, to a maximum probably of October 15th. In the original, uh, documents that were, uh, created September 25th was the deadline, and, um, I need a little more time to, uh, close this for a few reasons.
Yeah, that was a gravel driveway currently, and this is gonna be a gravel replacement?
Well, yeah, well, actually, it's, uh, it's, uh, like, uh, eight feet or so of it was a little apron, actually in that it's proposed, I think it was 20 feet up onto it, uh, and I think it may be, 'cause it's gonna be a little steeper, and we don't want the gravel washing back down into the, into Central Street and coming, an issue with that, is why I think we gotta go further gravel on it, but, so.
Is there, is there been any thought about, um, possibility of just giving, I don't want this purchaser to, um, be concerned, just give them a quick claim deed and, and take the money and go ahead and do whatever work we're gonna do?
Uh, well, the driveway isn't the issue, it's the, uh, personal property inside that I'm waiting for right now, as a resolution.
I see.
And to end that and make sure it is the end of it.
I thought, I thought we already passed that deadline.
Uh, we did, but we didn't. Um, is the easiest, and I've been working on this for like, two weeks now.
Well, we've had a nine-year work on this.
And I know, well, and you know what, and I wanna make sure our i's are done and our t's are crossed on this, but let's just say I wanna send one more notice out.
Okay.
And give another exception, and then it will be.
Final.
Final, right.
Right.
Trust me, if I could do this tomorrow, I would get that. I wanna just cross the t's and dot the i's and make sure that it is final.
Understood.
Well, I move that we, uh, allow resolve 2015 37.
Second. We have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. All right. Item F, formally approve revised resolve due to a vote taken on August 28, 2014 meeting, considering resolve R 2015 dash 24 to approve and sign amendment to the Bucksford Town Code, Chapter Two, Administrator Section 2.1, Holidays. Do you have anything on this?
Uh, this just basically is a vote you already took last week, um, we had the public hearing, which was originally on giving the two holidays, um, and that the, uh, committee came back with a suggestion that it was going to be Columbus Day, Martin Luther King, but one of the personal days, uh, would be reduced, and, uh, that was voted down, and a motion was made to approve it, uh, as we're originally, uh, chan, as the original change that went to the public hearing was to add Columbus Day and Martin Luther King Day with no reduction in personal days, which passed at the last meeting, and you signed the certification form of the ordinance change, so this is just ratifying your vote that you already took at the last meeting.
How would the council like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a procedural question. If we, the, the record, the town record, when it shows these, if the initial vote, which we took two weeks ago on this particular issue, was five to two, whatever it was, and this vote, we're gonna just, we're, we're certifying that vote, now this is the final vote in the records show, let's say tonight we all vote to certify the record, seven, zero, what does it show in the record as being the vote on the particular issue?
Five, two.
It shows that as five, two. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
I was gonna say, that's a question of a town clerk keeping the notes.
Okay, how would the council like to proceed on this item?
So, we'll.
Second. We have a motion and second, to approve, approval of the resolve. Anything further, public on this? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked.
I'd wait till my first move.
Item G.
I think we ought to, yeah.
Consider resolve R 2015 dash 38 regarding enforcement of the main uniform building and energy code.
This is what you talked, uh, no, we, we didn't talk about it here. We talked about it in committee tonight.
Who's the chairman of the ordinance committee?
I am.
And actually.
I, the, we did have, we had a discussion, the ord, the, resolve as presented allows the code enforcement, or has, allows the code enforcement office to do the, uh, building inspections, the purpose of which is to save people money, and the town people money, because there would not be a fee for that. The committee agreed with it with one alteration, is that we wanted language, uh, we wanted to give a, the builders or the homeowners, whatever, the option if they so wanted to, to pay someone else to do it, for whatever reason. And everybody on the committee agreed with that.
As long as they're hiring an approved inspector.
Yeah, it's gotta be a licensed, approved individual, just like that, and, and everything. So, with that amendment to the resolve, the committee and as we agreed, uh, supports this, but it just gives people, I don't know why they would wanna, but they can do it for free, or they can pay a thousand dollars, so, whatever.
And one thing I did wanna add to that, that we need to do a couple changes in the actual, uh, codes too, to also, um, address this issue somewhat in the future, but this will at least allow it for now, um, to happen, save people money.
So, I, with that amendment to the resolve, I would move for approval.
Second.
Anything further from the public on this? Anything from the council? And we're gonna, where are we gonna put this in the language?
I'm gonna add it to the next one, bring it back as a revision.
Okay.
Probably under where it says, uh, where the enforcement, uh, um, where is it?
Probably where is the third party inspection services can?
Yeah.
Be used.
And system inform, chose to require that, and then, uh, oh, right, and, and the end there, the town's code enforcement be authorized for building inspections required to verify compliance, the main uniform building, energy code down at the bottom, and say, uh, and, um, but, uh, um.
The owner could choose.
Permittees, uh, right, are also given the option to hire an independent inspector.
Licensed inspector.
Yeah, licensed inspector.
That's approved.
At their own cost. Right, right.
So, we approve this resolve now, that, as, as amended, right? That's what was proposed here? Okay. Okay, we have, I've asked the public, anything further from the council on this?
I got, probably, um, uh, maybe I missed a meeting on this, does this, is this inspection, is it before they can move in the home, pre, you inspect the home before they can move into it?
One of them. Uh, yeah, there, there are actually several inspections that need to be done, starting with the foundation, do framing inspections, insulation inspections, um, and a final walk through. And in conjunction with doing the building inspections, I'd also be doing plumbing inspections at the same time.
I figured you do the plum electrical stuff like that.
Not electrical, just, we don't require electrical permits or inspections in Bucksford. But definitely plumbing would be.
The state code doesn't require it?
The.
Yeah, master electrician.
For, for commercial, uh, work, you need a state permit, but not residential. Now, what we do require is if the work's being done by a homeowner who's not a licensed electrician.
Right.
That needs to be inspected by a licensed electrician, something given to me saying it meets code.
Yes, okay.
I just didn't know how complete a home has to be before they can move in.
It would need to be, um, the life safety factors would need to be completed, and plumbing
would need to be completed, um, hazard things like electrical cover plates, and switches, and outlets would need to be installed. Finished work like carpeting or trim work around windows and doors would not need to be completed to get the.
That was my next question, thank you.
Painting, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
Working, working fixtures, uh, working smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, um, and, uh, proper means of egress.
Okay.
Those things that we'd be looking at.
All those in favor? Who, getting?
I was just gonna say, didn't you say, Mike, that means you could still live in your basement for a while before you built the rest of the house?
No, not anymore. They can in Orington and Dedham and.
Well, that, actually, that, you, you, you can occupy a basement.
Can you?
Uh, in compliance with the, the life safety concerns.
Okay.
As long as it's a safe environment for you to occupy.
Yeah.
Bring it up. You can have concrete walls and a roof over that, that's not a problem, as long as all the.
So you could actually issue an occupancy permit for that part of the project, then?
As long as it met all the life safety concerns.
Okay. So then you'd have to do the same inspection when you build upward?
Right, as you, as you continue building, yes, they'll kick in additional inspections, yeah.
Great.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
All right, now we're on to the next page.
Okay. Item 10 is appointments. Appointment of a deputy welfare director.
Yeah, this would be Jackie, Jackie's been handling a lot of the general assistants, uh, been taking the applications, doing the forms, uh, and we've been discussing them, and, um, so she's basically my deputy welfare director, seems to be enjoying it, and, um, well, I don't know about enjoying it, but sometimes she is. I know I enjoy it when, uh, she comes in and has it just about done, when we discuss, uh, you know, the decisions and everything, and look at the formulas, so, uh, she had a review, and we did pretty good, we had a few, uh, things that, um, we needed to fix, but for the most part, uh, we did pretty well in compliance, so there was just some paperwork issues with signing the, uh, decision form and something like that, that I didn't realize that we didn't do on a few of them, so, 'cause they randomly pick out like, five, so I don't know which ones they picked out. I thought I signed mine.
No, no, we had a, uh, an inspection of our general assistants, right?
Right.
Now, uh, this was brought up probably six months ago, and, at, at the time, I, I didn't know if it was kosher, so to speak, to have an hourly employee actually signing off on, uh, general assistance, uh, payments. Evidently, they don't have any problem with this?
No, there's no problem with that, no.
Okay.
My, I, that's how I've done it for years now.
It doesn't, it doesn't put that person in a, uh, a particular liability situation?
No, no, because they, they're following the rules that covered under the same insurance policies as we would be, um, and of course, uh, we discuss most of the decisions between the two of us anyways, and I sign a good bulk of them myself, so, uh, and then we've discussed how we'll do emergency assistance, which happens in, in the evening, and I told her, so as I'm in town, I'd probably take care of a good portion of those, not that there should be a lot of them after the first time they meet me on a Saturday night at 10:30 for emergency.
They never wanna come back, huh?
No, I, I just, well, the thing is, if you're running out of fuel, usually, uh, you should have known that by Thursday or Friday, not 10:00 at night on a Saturday.
Oh, it'll happen.
Well, it does, exactly, it does happen usually about once, and then, then it's like, you might wanna monitor this for the future.
Are we supposed to take a vote on this?
Yeah, you gotta vote to sign the appointment form, I, oh, actually, maybe you don't, you're just ratifying my, uh, thing on this one. It's one of those, right? Or is there a second page that I missed?
All we're doing is, all we're doing is taking a vote to allow him to authorize it? Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
So, move.
Second. We have motion and second, to re, to approve the appointment of a deputy welfare director. Anything from the public? Further from the council?
Is, is, this been a position in the past, or is this a brand new? We, we've never had this before, a deputy?
No, never had.
Okay. Is there a monetary thing with this, or no, it's just a part of a job?
Just part, right, it's done during her regular workday, which means somebody else is working on the counter while she's taking that application.
Yep, okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, town managers' report.
Uh, not much, uh, I think basically you got it tonight with all the work on that agenda this couple of weeks, is what I've done, um, and I think Dwayne hit and Jeff hit on all the other things that we've, I've been doing this week.
Okay, item 12, approve any licenses and permits, we don't have any. 13, discussion of items not on the agenda for council or public? Any items out there? Anything here, um?
I have one.
Steelers are on in 25 minutes, just so you know, I'm thinking.
You remember when the?
They lose anyway.
The Woodmans came here about their cemetery, and was there, was there a suggested gift of some money to them, from the council?
No.
Was it? Okay, I just wanted to go.
Okay, I just wanted to know that.
We, we discussed with them and they, they had enough for this year, and they were going to continue to see where they stood. They were letting us know that they might be back, and at this point, they haven't come back.
Well, I got a follow-up on this a little bit better. They were raffling off a cart of wood, and it was a good, good, strong cart of wood. I bought some tickets and I got it. I mean, it wasn't set up, no. It wasn't set up. I, I was kind of, I told Harry that, he was good about it, but they raised, I think, about four hundred dollars, but, for the cemetery, anyway. And they, they have that gentleman on Pine Street, up on the left, to take care of it. What am I thinking of? That does lawns and everything else.
Oh, Nat Gray?
Nat Gray, right, right. And he's very fair with them too. He does, he does lawns, so I had a chance to talk with him a little bit the other day, so, yeah, that was, so anyway, it's just a, just a comment, that's all. I thought, I thought, Dave, I thought you mentioned it, but I thought we had talked about possibly in next year's budget, reviewing that whole cemetery budget, because I don't think we've increased it for years, and there's a formula that the money that's appropriated from the town is divvied up among the cemetery associations, and I'm not sure of the formula on that, but.
That's just exactly what we did discuss, and in fact, just for information, we've also, I was, I've been contacted and gave the same information to the, North Bucksport, the one on forty-six, up off of.
Hillside.
The Church Road.
Hillside.
Yeah, Hillside Cemetery, they're in the same, not the same, but similar, and they're, they were told the same thing, that we're going to be looking at it next year, and if they have an issue or a request to make it at that particular point, so I'm not going to be surprised if we get a number of them, because a number of these small cemeteries are all in the same situation. And we're required to do something, so we're, we're going to have to look at it, but, yeah, that's what we told the Hillside and, I'm sorry.
Evergreen.
Evergreen, the same thing, because Evergreen said they had enough money for this year and that they were going to be short for next year unless they could raise the money.
They would like to continue to manage it too, which I think would be a good idea. Yeah, I, you know, the twenty-some years I've been here, I don't think we've ever really increased that line item in the budget.
Minimal.
And, you know, fuel costs going up, labor costs, we probably ought to take a look at that.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion items? Upcoming public hearings? We don't have any, do we?
No.
New section.
Designation of topic for committee assignments, schedule on the committees? We don't have any?
We do.
We do have a committee meeting.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Next, the twenty-fifth, before the next council meeting, starting at five. The only thing we've got is.
Do you have to start at five?
I'm going to.
Huh?
Five. Five o'clock.
Mike, five's hard to make.
The reason I said that is we've got this sewer thing, which won't take long, but we need to get back on the, or.
Charter.
Charter, there we go. Charter issue. And that, you know, we got to have, spend some time on that, so that's why I said starting at five, if that's okay with you guys.
I'll do my best.
So other than that.
The finance committees?
What time, what was that, the twenty?
Twenty-fifth at five.
Well, is that the same, is that a Thursday or Wednesday?
Should be Thursday.
Is it? Okay.
It's a Thursday, that's right before the council meeting.
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty.
Five thirty. M, five P.M.
Five P.M.
This is this month.
Twenty-fifth, September.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you make five, Mike?
I'm going to do my best.
I just want to make a comment. Yeah.
Maybe that's why I put five thirty the last time, Mike, because you had mentioned that.
Yeah, yeah, it might be, yeah. It's, five o'clock's kind of hard sometimes.
Do we have to sign this thing about that?
No, you don't have to do that.
Okay, Frank has something he would like to say?
We talk about keeping the view of, of the river open. We got one place on Main Street that's, it's really hard. I see people come up from the bridge and they turn around in the little parking lot there, the place between Don Lewis and Gary Sawyer. I mean, no one ever pays attention to that, but that just blocks the view from the river.
Bamboo or something there.
What's that?
Is it all that bamboo you're talking about?
There's bamboo, there's apple trees, there's every kind of tree in there except an ash tree, but anyway. I wish they were all ash trees. But, but anyway, I just thought, in fact, not cut down, but clear it out. It would, it would give you a good view of the river, especially me, by the way.
Is that ours?
I don't think so. Gary sold it to Don Lewis years ago.
Well, I thought it belonged, we had talked about that years and years ago, and it still belongs to the railroad, I thought.
Yeah, that's what I thought. They couldn't get permission to do anything.
Really? It's quite a bank in there too. Gee, that's too bad.
We may be, we may be able to get permission from them to at least do some thinning. We're allowed to do somewhat thinning.
You're in the shoreline zone, so you have to pay attention to those regulations, but you aren't allowed to use those things.
How big is the size? Four inches or less, or what is it around?
There's different sizes, the number of.
Right?
Or is it basal area?
If they're smaller than a certain size, like two inches, we can cut them down anyways, so we shouldn't be staying.
Are we sure about the ownership of that piece of property?
I have no idea.
Ah, yes, Gary Sawyer, you talked to me about it.
Yes, Gary Sawyer talked to me about it about a few years ago.
And Mike Jakes, everything else, then Don, then he went to Don and said, look, I got these other people that want it. You sure you don't want that? Because that telephone pole is, is the boundary, and part of Mr. Lewis's land was, I mean, his bill was setting on Gary.
That's up on the flat, though, but the slope is owned by.
I don't know.
The railroad, I thought. Maybe, maybe they bought it from the railroad.
There's two length telephone poles there that Gary sold.
Can and.
Sold, maybe he sold them.
Sold them to the railroad.
I know.
And another thing, while, while we're looking at it, be another thing that I think Paul brought up, and I think several of us have, that out on the causeway, out on Silver Lake, you know.
Yes, that's bad.
We've got to be, we've got to be allowed to thin that out, so that.
He used to cut it.
Right.
Yeah.
Completely cut.
You have to do it before it gets bigger than two inches.
It's been there a couple of years.
Now, I mean.
Had it in touch for what, five, ten? I had someone contact me, they were actually on the way to the landing, and, you know, with someone running out there and vehicles coming the other way, and it was almost an accident, and he said actually coming back, you know, later on in the night, it was, it was the same. When I lived out there, I was cut every two or three years. Yeah, it's, it's growing up hard again.
Well, since we're discussing, what about on some of these little roads that I take to get to my house every once in a while and like.
I'm all about safety.
Landscaping is flopped over. Has this been a big issue in the past about us requiring them to turn that back or us doing that? This is a few intersections where you can't.
Yeah, I know.
At all.
I don't know, you weren't here, and I'm not sure how many members of the council remember, but a number of years ago now, there was an extremely serious accident on the corner of School and Central. Reason for the accident was that a person was traveling on School toward Central, and the trees had grown down and blocked the stop sign. The person drove through the intersection, T-Bone, and I'm telling you, and there was a great uproar to clean those things at that time, and that, that was cleared, so if there's anything like that.
That's kind of dangerous. It's supposed to be reported by the police officers when they're out there when the signs are obstructed, so, and I think Sean has done that in the past, it just, now he might have got by somebody, you know.
It's important that we maintain that.
I just noticed there's certain ones that I haven't even seen the stop sign even hardly there.
Yeah.
We volunteered, there's another stop sign going the other way.
Well, maybe with the mowing season slowing down, we can get some of the people that are working on the waterfront to work on getting some of that done.
Yeah.
You bet. I'd just tell my wife on one of those days, and she comes home complaining about it, hand her the weed whacker.
Just, I think I know where that weed whacker's going to go.
You can't put it on the town payroll.
No, no, she'll probably do it for free. I like to have her be proactive about taking care of her complaints.
Be careful, she could be watching TV.
She won't be. There's got to be something on that she, I don't think she likes watching.
She's enough of him.
See, right, exactly. Hank, you got it right, right there.
All right, item sixteen, agenda items requiring executive session. We don't have any. Item seventeen.
What were you doing?
I'm making a motion.